We'll go ahead and move on to our 9:06 a.m. item, Presentation of Proclamation Commending Gordon Haggott, County Surveyor from Public Works. And I will go ahead and get this started. I want to see if we have Gordon online here. I saw his name earlier. Okay. Just want to check in. Gordon, are you here with us? There you are. Perfect. Glad that everything's working out. And then Director Deleon, also want to make sure that you're here with us before I get started.
Yes, good morning.
Perfect. Good morning. All right, here we go. Proclamation Commending Gordon Haggott, County Surveyor. Whereas Gordon Haggott has been a valued and respected employee of the County of Lake since July 31, 2006. Whereas Gordon Haggott began his career with Lake County as a deputy county surveyor. And whereas Gordon Haggott accepted the position of county surveyor on December 31, 2008. And whereas Gordon Haggott was awarded the County Engineers Association of California's Surveyor of the Year in 2016 for his tireless work on monument preservation. And whereas Gordon Haggott has been described as personable, genuine, a team player, a hard worker, and a good example for others to follow. And whereas Gordon Haggott has dedicated his career with Public Works to serving the public and is an excellent example of what a public servant is. And whereas Gordon Haggott has volunteered his time to various civic clubs, including the Anderson Marsh Interpretive Association. And whereas Gordon Haggott is not just a surveyor, but also a local farmer whose vegetables have won top honors in past Lake County fairs. And whereas Gordon Haggott will be deeply missed by his coworkers and the various departments and private surveyors he has assisted. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby commend Gordon Haggott for his service to the County of Lake and to the citizens of Lake County, and extends our appreciation for his dedication and hard work, and wish him the best in the future. He will be greatly missed. Passed and adopted this Thursday, third day of August, 2021. Gordon, thank you so much for your service. I believe that you wanted to say a few words, so I will let you go first before the supervisors bring in our comments.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Sabatier. And I want to thank your board and Carol for being here today and everybody else that's tuned in. Before I go too much further, I think I have to thank my wife, who has been patient with me for the last 15 years, has put up with some restless nights that I've had, and has understood when I'm sitting at the dinner table staring out the window. And she says, Gordon, you're still at work, aren't you? And I would have to admit that, yes, she's right. But I have to say, I've truly enjoyed my 15 years with the county. And I couldn't have done it without the help of just a lot of people. I started my career under Steve Farr, who was a county surveyor back in 2006. And he's been a great mentor to me, even to this day, and helped me with a lot of problems and given me just a ton of advice. He introduced me to Bob Bridges, who was a deputy county council back when I first started. And Bob and I discussed several surveying and planning issues, and I had the benefit of his experience, as well as a lot of people in Department of Public Works and the planning department. So I guess if I have any advice for the newest members in county employment, it's to seek out people in your office or your department that have some experience in what you're doing and try and tap into that. If you don't, then I would suggest getting together with your staff and finding out which people have strong points in certain areas, and then try and share that knowledge. This mentorship was a great advantage to me and gave a jump start to my career. I want to acknowledge our group of local and out-of-county land surveyors and civil engineers for their hard work in helping develop Lake County. Any development projects in the county always involves one or both of these folks. So it's been a pleasure to work with them, and I look forward to continuing a relationship even after I leave. I would like to thank all the staff in planning, water resources, and admin for their help over the years, and all of the departments down on the second floor, especially the recorder-assessor's office and the IT department. I know the IT department is going to miss me greatly because I think I keep them as busy as anybody up here on the third floor. I also have to thank my DPW family. These are the people that I see and work with just about every day, and they are indeed a family. We've shared in success and failures, good times and not-so-good times, but we've always supported one another, and it's been just a great relationship. I have to thank Lori. She's kind of the hub of our office up here. She dispatches everything in Public Works and keeps us all informed. We have Alicia, Sylvia, and Lindsay, who take care of all of our accounting and help with the budgets. Celia, who is our right-of-way expert and also manages the airport. We have the fellows over in E&amp;I, John, Tim, Dave, Stephen Scott, who left here just a while ago, but were always a part of the E&amp;I team. The road crew, Jim, Chris, Ed, and Daniel, who always brought a sense of humor into the office and not only kept our roads and bridges maintained. Chris at Central Garage for keeping all the equipment running, and Jim at painting signs for providing the signs on all our roads so Sheriff's Department and fire departments could find people. I also have to thank the people that manned the counters. Cherish and Rick and Alma, they're kind of the first line of defense for us. When members of the public come in, they usually take the initial hit before they give it to us. I want to thank County Council, Lloyd and Kathy and certainly Anita, who has calmed the waters for me with her expertise and guidance to where I could actually get some sleep at night. I always respected her logical approach to problem solving, and she always provided a clear path to a positive solution. She's had to suffer through a lot of my hand-wringing decisions, and I apologize for that, but I know she understands. Now for Scott. Scott has always supported the County Surveyor's Office and me. I think even if he disagreed with some of the decisions that we'd made here, he always had faith in my judgment, or at least I think so. If he really disagreed, he would tell me, and he would say, "You might be overthinking this just a little bit," and he might suggest another idea. And I'd tell him, "Well, I'll think about it." I'm going to miss his positive attitude, his wit, and his great sense of humor, which, believe me, has helped keep us, all of us up here on the third floor, going for the last 18 months. I'm also going to miss the Monday morning revival meetings, where we take a look at what's ahead of us for the week, and we usually get a exercise and a "best day ever" remark from Marina to kind of lift us up. Finally, I have to thank the lady that has been my survey technician ever since I've been the county surveyor, and that's Kara. We all know Kara. She is the one that's been responsible for keeping the County Surveyor's Office basically She keeps it organized, and she takes a ton of work off my plate so I can focus on other She's been responsible for addressing the public, taking phone calls and emails, all the map reviews, all of the cursory reviews that the County Surveyor's Office is responsible for. And she's just been a great person to work with, and I'm going to miss that. So anyway, that's about all I have. I just honestly could not have asked for a better group of people to work with, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gordon. Appreciate the heartfelt message to all of your colleagues and staff, and I'm sure that they all feel the exact same way. And seeing the reaction from Director Deleon, I, that's proof of it right there. I do want to offer a chance for Director Deleon, since he worked with you hand-in-hand throughout your 15 years, to give him a chance before we keep bringing it back to the board and then open it up for the public.
Thank you, Chair Sabatier. Yeah, you know, I've been the director here since 2010, and that's the most Gordon Haggott has ever said in the whole time I've been here. So that, in and of itself, should indicate how special today is. So I appreciate the opportunity, and you're recognizing him and his outstanding career. Excuse me. I just, I want to just take a couple minutes. I don't want to take a lot of time here. You know, as the proclamation noted, Gordon is a bit of a Renaissance man. He's been involved with the Anderson Marsh Group, you know, acclaimed grower of award-winning produce. He and his wife Linda are fixtures at the Lake County Fair. His career has taken him from the mountains in the North Coast, in the heyday of the logging wars, to private practice, and now concluding his career with a successful and impactful stint as a county surveyor here in Lake County. Lake County has a rich history of outdoorsmen. They learned to hunt and fish as youngsters, and they grew to know every inch of this county. They were a bit of an outlaw, some of them, but they all grew up appreciating the camaraderie and the bonds with friends and family that were forged in deer camps. And the second Saturday in August is a holiday to them, and Gordon is one of those special Lake County outdoorsmen. You know, he talked about the things that, excuse me, that he's going to miss, and that's one of the things I'm going to miss, is the stories and that connection to Lake County's history. He's continued a high standard, or continued the tradition of high standards for surveying in Lake County, and he's certainly going to be missed. And I know I speak on behalf of all the employees of Public Works when I say congratulations and enjoy well-deserved retirement. So thank you, Gordon.
Thanks, Scott. I appreciate it.
Supervisor Pyska?
Oh, I'm still up. I'll go first. Gordon, I'm sorry that we didn't get a chance to work very closely together, though I have seen a lot of your work over the years, and I really, I wish you the best in retirement. I think we're going to be competitive at the fair going forward. You leave some very large shoes to fill, and I want to thank you for your service, and I wish you all the best in your years to come.
Thank you Supervisor Pyska. Yeah, you're going to have to up your game if you're going to compete at the fair. That's all I can tell you.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, Gordon, it's been an honor working with you ever since I was on the Planning Commission. And I remember a specific time when I was first appointed as the chair, and it was a very, you know, new experience for me. And we had an item, and I was actually trying to find it, but I know it was in District One, and I remember there was contention amongst the constituents and somewhat amongst us on the Planning Commission. And I think it was, I think it, you came in, I know you came in and you sat right here where Carol is, and you explained and gave some input, and it put everything to rest, and we were able to move on. So I, ever since then, I knew your value for the county, and I appreciate the work you've done, and I really appreciated you that day because I didn't know I was going to control that meeting. So thank you, and good luck on your, you know, good luck on your retirement.
Thank you Supervisor Crandall. I appreciate that.
Supervisor Scott?
Just want to thank you, Gordon, for your service here to Lake County. And I'll have to say, for the first time ever, I decided I was going to enter something into the fruits and vegetables for Lake County. So now I'm a little worried, because usually I stick to the baked goods, and I went outside my box. So we'll see how that works out with the three of us this year. And I also want to let you know that I had a constituent reach out to me last night to make sure I was aware how important you have been to this county for the progress and the projects. So it's not just the county workers that are seeing the great work you have done, but the constituents here in the county making sure that we are aware of that. So thank you for your service and good luck on your retirement.
Thank you Supervisor Scott.
Supervisor Simon?
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Gordon, I would just like to say, you know, thank you for your service, and yeah, I wish you just great times on your retirement. In the five years I've been here, got to work on a few projects. EJ talked about probably one, but there was a fire rebuild after the valley fire in Anderson Springs, and it was early on, and my tenure is, you know, my first term. And, you know, I had a vacated road out there. I had no idea what to do, and you said, "You know what? I'll meet you out there in the field." You know, it just is just another testament. There were some great words used there, you know, just honest, hard-working, and just, you know, a great person. So I get to see you at the Lower Lake Action Committee group meals down in Lower Lake, but there were just some great projects. Rebuilding that home there and vacating that road for those folks in Anderson Springs wouldn't have got done without your help, and I know there are other folks in the department that helped get that done. That may have been the meeting that you guys were having because there were some challenges with it. But I also want to just talk about a very important project that was done out just this last year, I think it was, time flies, but the renaming of the roads out in Jerusalem Valley. I know that was a project that was hanging out there for about 12 years, but that comes right down to just saving lives and response time. So I want to thank you for that. Those, you know, like I said, some of the main projects did try and work with you to rename a hill, which I thought was pretty cool, and it wasn't successful, but I want to thank you for all that hard work. And as Tina said, you touched every project or development, it looks like, that happened in Lake County, and I just want to thank you for your service. And I just wanted to thank you also for your door always being open. Come in and ask a question, you know, especially as a supervisor, you know, a lot of folks assume we know everything. We do not. We have great directors, professionals that work here at this county, from the admin all the way down to, you know, our housekeepers that do a great job for us. And we walk into those rooms with problems, and you guys do a great job of helping us solve those. And I just go back to, you know, a road that was vacated. It was supposed to be done since 1954, and you got it done just to help these folks rebuild their homes. So I just want to say thank you very much, and I hope you get a big deer this year if you're going hunting next weekend. So thank you very much, Gordon. And you'll never see me in no fruit-growing or vegetable-growing competition, but I would gladly eat the vegetables that you cook. So, all right, thank you very much, Gordon. I just want to thank you for your service. So greatly appreciate it and consider you, you know, a friend because you've just, you've been that personable. So thank you very much for your service.
Thank you Supervisor Simon. I have to, I can't kind of circle back on one thing. I can't take too much of the credit for the addressing out in Jerusalem grade. Kara and Mike Wink with Cal Fire and some of the residents all pretty much came together as a group to make that happen, and like I say, Kara did the bulk of the work there. Anyway, I appreciate your comments, and I'll tell you what, I'll bring, I'm going to bring vegetables up to the third floor after I retire, and I'll circle down onto the first floor and bring you some.
Thank you.
So it didn't say on your proclamation that you were humble. That comment right there, I think explicitly summarizes who you are. You have such a deep, rich history, not just in your knowledge of the area, but also your family has been here for generations. And I still feel that I'm a newcomer to Lake County. I feel very fortunate to be in the position that I am currently, but you are the most approachable, welcoming, and kind person. Each and every single time, there's a smile, there's a hello, there's a very approachable comment, and I just couldn't appreciate that more. The fact that we have mutual friends has increased our relationship and enhanced it as well, and I've come to know you, and I appreciate the work that you have done for the county. Whether or not you want to admit it, your finger has been in the projects somewhere, somehow, to a certain degree, and every development has your name on it. And that is appreciated because that is what makes us propel Lake County into the future. I wish you the best. I know you're not going anywhere. You're still going to be right here in Lake County. I think this is your home to be. And so I know that this will not be the last that we see one another. One of the projects that I know you and I worked on, I actually feel sorry about. It was so much more difficult than I thought it would ever be, and that was the bus depot over in Clear Lake. Splitting up that property, I thought was just going to be a simple affair, and it took a lot more work than I thought was necessary, but I don't know the rules. You and Anita worked hard on that and eventually figured it out and made it work, and I appreciate that. There are many people behind the curtain that make things happen, and you are definitely a wizard behind the curtain, and I appreciate all the work that you've done. In 15 years, we talk so much about the struggles of retention. You are a prime example of somebody who has put their loyalty and their heart into the County of Lake to better the lives of the people of Lake County, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you Supervisor Sabatier. Appreciate it.
So we have a comment from Anita Grant.
You didn't think for a second you were getting out of here without me commenting, did you? To me, Gordon's just the epitome of tough act to follow. And what Supervisor Sabatier said about the transit hub, Gordon worked tirelessly, but I can tell you that there has been no significant exchange of property, sale or purchase of property involving the county where Gordon did not have to untangle something. And the fact he does it like a detective, he gets a lead, he follows through, he's just amazing in how he handles it. And then Gordon steps back and takes no credit for anything. And you can see today, he's been very gracious, thanking everyone, very quiet about his many accomplishments. So Gordon, we're all going to miss you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Anita. I appreciate that. We'll be in touch.
I want to make sure I give staff a chance if they wish to speak right now versus opening it up for the public. Raise your hand or just start speaking.
Chair Sabatier, I'm going to just jump in before you take any other comment, and I neglected to share something. This is kind of a tradition that we have up here in Public Works, and it's unfortunate that we're all in separate rooms. It would have been an honor to present this to Gordon in front of all of you and his peers, but I'll do it remotely, and that is, and I'll try to hold this up. This is a sign congratulating Gordon on his retirement, and so I'll be presenting that to him here personally, but I wanted to share that with everyone, that we've got this nice sign for him. Again, kind of a tradition here in Public Works, so thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
It's the Public Works Gold Watch.
Better than that.
Nice. All right, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Lars, Lars Ewing, Director Ewing.
Oh, yeah, thank you very much. Gordon, I had the pleasure, and I was really lucky enough to work kind of kitty-corner to Gordon for, I'd say about half of his time with the county from 2010 to 2016 or so. You know, I always looked forward to, since then, any of my questions that had to do with surveying because it meant I got to talk to Gordon again, and I was, I really missed it when I left there. But one quick story that sticks out to me, I came in one day and I was kind of sharing some frustrations with Gordon about my sons who were, I have four of them, they were fighting, and, you know, Gordon, in his, you know, calm and just kind of grandfatherly way, told me about how he and either his brothers or cousins, you know, how they used to fight when they were kids, and it involved going down to the basement with a gun and shooting each other, and I don't recall if it was a BB gun or not. I presume it probably was, but that really helped us to kind of put things in perspective for me. So I was able to go home and, you know, go about my day with a little bit more confidence that things are probably okay. So I really will miss, you know, that, along with, to be honest, his surveying expertise. I mean, I, when I was able to talk to Gordon, I would call him with many questions, and usually they were probably, you know, frequent, very basic about surveying, and to be honest, probably very repetitive, and he was, he was patient with my ignorance, and I've learned quite a lot from him, and I really, you know, that is something that has been probably, I shouldn't say understated, but he really does know his trade, and I think that can't be overstated. So Gordon, I'll miss you, you know, certainly the humble spirit that was talked about, but I'll say the grandfatherly nature. That's an odd way of saying it, but I really think that kind of sums you up from my perspective. So Gordon, we'll see you around, and whether it's vegetables or guns or whatever, but I couldn't be happier to have worked with you over the years.
Thanks, Lars. And it was BB guns that if you want to advise the boys about maybe taking that a step further, we had other things that we did to press the envelope.
All right, I'll keep you away from my voice. All right, thanks, Gordon.
There's a disclaimer in this meeting, I believe. I'm not quite sure where to start, but there's a disclaimer in there somewhere. All right, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Is there any members of the public that wish to speak on this item?
Yeah, whatever.
Oh, please, come on up to the microphone. Sorry, I was looking at Zoom.
I know. Thank you. Maria Turner, I just wanted to say thank you to Gordon. I was just a baby planner when you started with the county, and I know I was pesky with questions because there's a lot to learn, and I just really appreciate the time, the expertise, the professionalism, and the willingness to invest your knowledge and to share your knowledge with pesky baby planners. I know that every bit that you helped me, and not just me, but when you multiply it with all the planners who are there now or have been there during your tenure, every little bit that you gave us was helpful. And when you help us do our jobs better, it just means that we have a better product for the public. And so thank you, because in the years that you have been here, there are a number of planners, both still in Lake County and who have gone on to other jobs, that we are all doing a much better job for the public because of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments in the boardroom? Please come on up.
Steve Farr. I'm not going to repeat all of the accolades and everything that Gordon was very, very much deserving of. I just wanted to offer my congratulations in person. Gordon was a godsend to me when he started at the county in 2006. Has been a tremendous asset to the county, it sure is shoes that will be absolutely impossible to fill. Been tremendous support for me, too, as I did a little private practice after retiring from the county. So just wanted to personally offer my congratulations, Gordon. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Any further comment in the boardroom on this item? Any comment in the Zoom room? We have one hand that popped up. Betsy Khan.
Good morning, everybody, and Gordon, I want to personally thank you as one of those members of the public who was helped by you and Kara and everybody in Public Works, but you especially, with your kindness and your patience, gave me some incredibly critical help, and I cannot thank you enough. Yeah, just have a wonderful life.
Thank you, Betsy. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the comment, and that looks to be done with on the Zoom room, and so we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Gordon, again, congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for your service to Lake County, and best of luck in your retirement.
Thank you very much.